I'm a proud grandpa again. No. Wrangled and no doubt. I've got six thirty. For the Verizon Wireless. And. Welcome, everybody to the town forum. It starts at six thirty. And. Want to ask a moment of silence before we start. Hope everyone will remember all the veterans today. I'm in. Commissioners, y'all seen the agenda for the public forum? I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion from Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Proton Widmer, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Alexander. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by the same eye. And opposed, the eyes carry. Floor is open, public comments. Did everybody sign in?
I did not, but I just heard of that and I'll be glad to sign in. Thank you very much for that and that addresses some of the issues that I had. Will do that, absolutely. And I want to thank you personally for recognizing that today is Veterans Day. That's the reason that we're all able to be here and have these mutual discussions to the benefit of our town and our country. What I'd like to do tonight is address a couple of concerns that I have. Thursday, October fourth, Mary Standard, one eighteen, Shenandoah Terrace, Montry, North Carolina. For the record, on Thursday, October fourteenth, the town of Montry held its monthly planning and zoning meeting, public forum and town council meetings. Members of the public were present at all meetings with several members of the public being there for all three meetings, a total of some three and a half hours. The space was much the same as tonight, with staff, members of the individual boards and members of the public in rather close and similar proximity to one another, certainly little or no social distancing. Four days later, on Monday, an individual present at all three meetings was diagnosed with a breakthrough case of COVID nineteen. That same Monday evening, members of planning and zoning and the Montry Town Council were individually contacted and told of their exposure to COVID nineteen. At least two members of the town council were concerned enough that they were tested for COVID. On Tuesday, the town hall was closed and quarantine signs were placed on the doors. In contrast to the immediate notification of the two boards, members of the public who were in attendance at the meetings were not notified of their exposure to COVID nineteen, despite some having been there far longer than many members of the individual boards. No attempt, even minimal, was made on Monday night to reach out to the individual members of the public in attendance. No email was posted on Monday night through the sunshine list in an effort to reach those who were in attendance. Nothing was posted on the town website. Similarly, the closure and the quarantine of town hall was not posted on the Montry website on Tuesday. If you visited town hall on the previous Thursday, Friday or Monday, you would not have been aware of your possible exposure. This failure to notify the public, even by email or simply posting on the town website, placed people's health at risk. As a member of the public, me, that attended all three meetings on the fourteenth, for a total of three and a half hours, it placed my health and that of my family and friends at risk. These concerns were emailed to each member of the town council and Mayor Helms. And Mayor and Helms and I have had a very productive conversation about the public's need to be informed. Finally, to the question at hand, have new communication plans been put into place? If there is another case of COVID nineteen in town hall with possible exposure of the public, will the town inform the public minimally and immediately through the sunshine email list and the town website? Or, as happened previously, will only board members be personally contacted and informed? Putting it another way, if there was an exposure to COVID nineteen during the Board of Adjustment meetings, will the town of Montry, now that they have had this experience, only contact the members of the Board of Adjustments? Or will everyone be informed? Thank you very much for listening to these concerns and I hope you have addressed them.
Thank you, Mary. And thus the signup sheet out front. For people to. Sign their names when they come in with their phone numbers and so forth, so we'll have a means of communicating. Should something like that ever come up again? And Alex, if you would, you'll make something like that available also at the Board of Adjustment meeting, I would appreciate it. It will save everyone a lot of time by knowing the names and phone numbers of those who attended. And if you wanted to add them, a place for email addresses, that's fine too. Okay? So we have addressed it, Mary, and thank you. We had a great conversation yesterday. Coffee was even good. And we had a good time, so thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Who's next? Priscilla.
Hi, can you hear me through my mask if I speak closely? Great. Thank you, and I'll.
Do you mind?
Okay, sure. Is that better? First of all, thank you for that last point. I'm sure you all have been thinking through your procedures and I think all of us will greatly appreciate. I was also at one of those meetings, so I would love to be informed directly if there's a COVID risk that's known. And I'm glad that everybody's back safe and sound and that's fantastic and the most important. I wanted to turn to the Board of Adjustment question. And first of all, to thank all of you, all of the staff who've been putting so much time into the Board of Adjustment preparations for months. This complicated application that's being processed through, as well as the Board of Adjustment members themselves, they're not here tonight, but I just think we need to remember and recognize and acknowledge the incredible amount of work that's being done by everybody, especially for that very, as I say, complicated and lengthy now process. My concern is, I think you all know, I sent a note earlier, but I thought it might be helpful to just have a direct exchange here. My concern is that there may be a perception with the change of venue, sort of a significant change of venue, that there could proceed unfairness in a couple of ways. I'm not saying that, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not saying that it's a legal point, but I think the perception could well be there because Grand Chapel is so large and there's so much space, nobody hesitated to come through due to COVID concerns or others. And of course, moving the meeting here means that both de facto fewer members of the public can come because many seats need to be taken up by lawyers and witnesses and those withstanding, as well as the Board of Adjustment members and staff and the lawyers for the town. I mean, there's a lot of sort of taken seats, so there's only, my understanding is ten to fifteen potential seats left for the public, which is not ideal. So far, every session, there's been more than that, sometimes many more than that, certainly at the beginning of the hearings, folks from the publics who have attended. And I know already some people have said to me that they intend probably not to come because they don't want to sit in a small room that's full for a whole day, given COVID concerns. So it sort of also pushes people away a bit, which is not ideal. The second problem is that I think that the tech challenges continue. So I was at the planning and zoning meeting by Zoom this morning, which was very interesting. I was very happy to listen into that. And unfortunately, the microphones here, for whatever reason, don't pick up very well. So if people are more than just this far, you really can't hear very well. And I was having a hard time sort of texting in messages. Finally, I was helped by Alex and Scott to send through a message that we weren't really able to hear the commissioners. My worry is that that may well, and I think unfortunately could be likely to happen, with the Board of Adjustment as well, where, you know, going to have long hours sitting in front of these same microphones if the meeting is held here. So I have two questions. In terms of the first, in terms of sort of the location quandary, and I know Alex has put in a ton of, we've talked on the phone, I know he's put in a ton of time to look at alternatives. But I wanted to ask, because we had a brief initial chat on this, whether we know if it's legally not possible to change the location of the venue for next Wednesday, the seventeenth? Keep it on that day, but formally meet here and say it'll pick up in half an hour at another location?
Priscilla, clarify that. Legally not possible?
The question is whether, so Alex said that his thinking, and I think you were going to check, was that legally, once the place, the location has been established, that the meeting has to take place at that location. So it's been established for ten o'clock on the seventeenth and that he thought it might have to be pushed a whole twenty-four hours. And that's what I was trying to say, have we checked with the lawyers who would be able to confirm whether another hall could be found? And then, of course, we want to go ahead with the seventeenth, but couldn't find a better?
Let's answer one question at a time, since I assume you've got some others. Alex, you want to answer that? And Tom, you've been working on it too, I know.
So my concern is that once we advertise a location, that if we move locations, we might be running afoul of open meetings law. I have not confirmed that. My other concern is a location to move to. And that's something that we've discussed at great length. So I have had conversations with with members of board and with members of board have had conversations with the college. The college is making, in theory, making that space available again. Not during the day, just at night. And we can present that to the Board of Adjustments when they choose their next location. But as of right now, in the conversations I've had with our board attorney, all indication is we move forward with the seventeenth here at town hall.
Okay. It sounds like it's perhaps a legal decision and perhaps a practical decision in terms of clear signaling.
Can I just comment? The reason that I got involved with it was I just wanted to clarify with the college about the availability of the chapel. And it turns out that there was some miscommunication at the college. And I want everyone to understand, they are very much in favor of a very cooperative and collaborative approach with the town on providing as much space as often as they can. However, the chapel is used intermittently through the day up until about four or five o'clock every day. So the, at least until their break, which will, they have exams on the third of, last classes, third of December, exam starting the following week. But between now and then, if the board and the three sets of attorneys want to have an extended meeting, it has to be here, because this is the only location that is available during the day. If the board and the attorneys agree to a five-hour meeting or less, or even longer, but starting at four o'clock, the chapel is available. So that's really the logistical gist of it. And also from a from a mechanics video AV standpoint, those are really the only two choices that we have, where all the video equipment is already set up. I understand what you're saying, Priscilla, about these mics, but, and we've been working on it for ages, teaching people to be close as well as getting them so that they're reliable. And Josh knows those two systems, this one and the chapel extremely well. So those are really our two choices.
Thank you for that. Just as a note, and I'm sure you all have looked into this, we talked about it on the phone the other day. But my understanding is that if one had the physical space somewhere, it is possible to bring in the equipment, just as a note, I mean, companies.
Our equipment is not portable.
No, not your equipment, they would bring, there's companies that bring the equipment, set it up exactly.
And that's another cost of the town.
It's another cost.
We've already spent six thousand two hundred dollars on attorney fees just there, so plus staff time, so you know.
For every hearing, I imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah. I cannot imagine, just back of the envelope, I can't, I've been, I've been
Okay, go ahead.
looking at and worrying about that. The second question, actually, you've largely addressed in principle, but is there, is there any way we can, we collectively can find a way that the sort of the tech side and the sound quality can be more reliable on those days? If, whenever there is a meeting here, let's say for the next BOA meeting, you know, what's the best way so that, I mean, in gay through people, we're sort of shouting out, use the mic, but there will be fewer people here and the sound coming through Zoom is quite different than what we hear in the room as well. So people aren't aware. So again, can we work together somehow to improve that?
Alex, I would ask Josh, but is Josh going to be available for those meetings?
We haven't coordinated dates yet for the future, he is available for the seventeenth. But past the seventeenth, we haven't said, we haven't nailed down.
Josh, do your best. Okay.
Even if you have to yell from the balcony or the back of the room.
Should I sit down? No, I'm done, I just didn't know if you were going to say something to me or should I?
I have participated in the Board of Adjustment meetings by Zoom, as has Shirley Mitchell, many hours. And part of my function, self-assigned function, is to check the tech. And I've texted Alex and I've texted Tom with questions while they're on site. I've, for me, it has been wonderful. I was in the PNC meeting today until, Mary, I had to leave partway through your comments, I'm sorry to say, but I had no problem today sitting at my house, which is just right up the hill. So I know it has been a very difficult issue with tech for a long time. But in my recent experience, I've not had any problem with the PNC today or the three quarter adjustment meetings. I don't know if anyone else was in the PNC today, listening on Zoom, but for me, it worked fine, so thank you, Josh. And we'll just, you know, maybe there are other people who can flag more clearly if there's an issue or test it again before the meeting starts, perhaps.
Yeah. It wasn't for me, the connection was very good, but some of the microphones were too far away. I was really strained to hear. That was the problem. So, yeah, I think maybe we.
And I certainly loved Wade Burns' comment about the back of his head.
Yeah, that was.
We just, we just need to constantly remind people at those meetings to put it in their mouths almost.
Yeah.
You've got to have it right up against your mouth to be able to be heard.
Thank you, I've taken a lot of your time.
Priscilla, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And who's next? Yes, Martha.
I'm Martha Campbell, one forty-nine Maryland Place. One thing I came to do tonight was to suggest we have a sign-in sheet, so thank you. I was accustomed to that in the place I was before, and I think it's helpful. I think it'd be helpful to members of the council, if there are people here who don't speak and who are never identified, gives you a chance to look down the list and say, oh, that was so-and-so. So I think it can be helpful in lots of ways. I have also a COVID-related question. In addition to the COVID funds that have been reported before, that I think the town administrator reported, applying for and finding out an amount about two hundred and something thousand, I'm out of my head. I'm wondering if the town applied for any of the five fifty million dollars that the county got separately from that? I remembered reading in maybe the Black Mountain News that the town of Black Mountain applied for money for a visitor center or something. So whether they got it or not, I don't know that, but if the town, hopefully our town has applied for some of those other COVID funds. And I do encourage you to be ready for the chance to apply for some of the new funds from the infrastructure bill. I know these things take a while, but in our past, we were, we had shovel-ready projects, literally, to build, to dig wells. When money became available and we were able to really get to it fast, and that's how we got the system that we have that really supplies all of our water and sometimes gives water to Black Mountain when they need it. So whether it has to do with adding more charging stations, we only have one, whether it has to do with other things that come up in these bills and you'll be able to read it. Maybe it would be utilities and paving around Oklahoma and up Lookout Road. Maybe it'd be other things that are on your wish list that you'd like, that you couldn't get to this year. But I encourage you to be ready with whatever information you have so that maybe it'll plug in when the application comes. Because I think it's important for us, this is our tax money that, you know, is being spent. So it'd be nice to have some of it in a little place like Montry. So thank you so much, I appreciate your being aware of our needs.
Thank you, Martha. Who's next? Mr. Shire.
I can just mayor William Shire, one forty-six East Mister Terrace. And I appreciate you here tonight, coming as the chair of the dubious chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which all appointed us to meet with support. And unfortunately, we've done a lot more than that to all of our.
And Mr. Shire, would you speak, lift the microphone up closer to your mouth and speak?
No, I don't want to do that. What do you mean?
Mr. Shire, all of those extra meetings will be shown in your check.
And thank you for taking care of my wife today. I understood, you did a great job.
Thank you.
And for your normal, great reputation for customer service. Well, just to tell you all what we did today, and we're looking for y'all to help us and direct us on a number of things. First, the conference of planning committee, y'all recall that y'all passed a motion a month or two ago to ask us to appoint a conference of planning committee, which we have done. We subsequently discovered that that really needed to be by ordinance rather than motion. So on your agenda tonight is an ordinance for y'all to consider. I think you have a public hearing, and I hope you'll move on to adopt it tonight. That's very important so that we can move on. On that committee, we have already tentatively selected the members of that committee other than the designated members, MRA in the college. But we will meet again after y'all vote tonight to make that formal and to get that done. But I would ask y'all, in particular Mr. Mayor, if you would appoint one of these wonderfully solicitous members to be on that committee, that would be great, unless, are you pointing to yourself?
I'm going to do it.
Wonderful, great, we applaud that. We'll probably ask you to be the chair. We still have to do that, and we are anticipating that y'all want us to designate the chairman, which we will do unless y'all want to do that. So y'all might consider that as you go on tonight. As part of that, y'all have solicited bids for companies to consult on this, and we would encourage y'all to keep that process going. Alex gave us some information about that today. But we would love to see those and have a chance to respond, at least give y'all, at least our informal comment as to those that we might think would be better or worse. Number two. Septic tanks. Y'all recall in the zoning ordinance, which all of us, all of us worked on last year for so long, y'all included, we were asked to remove all the prohibitions of septic tanks. Turns out, due to Mason Blanks' great research, the town doesn't have any ability to monitor septic tanks anyway. It's a state statute. So we were all proceeding in the wrong direction, but we have changed the ordinance, the zoning ordinance. And now we've come back, as y'all asked us to do. And we've looked at all the general ordinances, which the staff found also referred to or prohibited septic tanks. Those are now before you in an ordinance that I hope that y'all will pass tonight. Third, the stormwater ordinance. We had a great presentation, as Alice has already alluded to, by Wade Burns today, on the stormwater and all the issues that come up in Montry as a special community. And after some discussion, we decided unanimously that we form, well, first of all, the Planning and Zoning Commission is under the ordinance, the Stormwater Advisory Committee. So we're acting in that capacity. We recommend that you give us the authority to appoint a special committee to review the stormwater ordinance. That would be six to eight people. And we also ask that you solicit consult, bids from consultants to serve as consultants to that committee. We all realized it is a terribly confusing ordinance. And we realized that we didn't have the capability to grapple with it, we needed some help. So we think the best way to proceed is with a special committee and then to get a consultant, which y'all will have to, we don't have any money. Y'all have to authorize us to employ consultants to do that. So I would urge you to do that. Things in our future are the sign ordinance, the setbacks generally, and the hillside ordinance. That's what we have been about, and I hope y'all will consider the things. The sign ordinance. Sign ordinance, the setbacks generally. As they apply to various places and lots, and the hillside ordinance. And just encourage y'all to encourage us to do the things that y'all want us to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. And again, thank you for all the work of your committee. Next, got about five minutes.
Wade, Wade Burns, two eleven Virginia Road. I've spoken before about wanting to be able to buy water up in the Graybeard ETJ area and want to encourage that consideration. Then I also just want you to know that I have worked on for years the possibilities of annexation up there. Will continue to do so as I'm able to. Who knows, you know, what would be possible? But I just want you to know, I believe it would be best for the town if we were annexed up there. And then I also believe it'd be best for the town if we figured out how to get sewer up there. And it'd be best for the town to complete the water system that you already have invested in there. And I mentioned to you before that I was investing some money to look at extending the town's water system from a manhole location near the caboose but down to the lots that are not at this point served. This would include MRAs. but down to the lots that are not at this point served. This would include MRAs for lots. This would include lots that we own and include the possibility of Hamilton and John Burris, if they wanted to buy water sometime, and y'all wanted to sell it to them. That, that would be good to do. So I have paid for and had the right-of-way area up there surveyed and staked. I've been doing some clearing up there, and I would love to work with anybody on the commission who would be interested in sort of discussing with me what I might do that's helpful. I'm willing to spend some money, but I'd love to also have some communication. And I would encourage anything that you can do to get the thing passed about us being able to buy water so I can start to build something up there. Thank you so much, Bill.
Wade, since last meeting, I've asked Alex and our town administrator to get with our town attorney about being able to sell water outside the corporate limits and about what kind, what we can charge and so forth. So that's in the works. We can't do anything till we hear back from them. Because whatever we decide, we need to make sure it's legal. Anyone else? Seeing nobody jump up, I've got one minute until seven, so we'll adjourn. If I can get a motion to adjourn. Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet to adjourn. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second from Commissioner Lentz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, carry. We are adjourned for one minute or less. Then we'll reconvene. Okay, folks, I've got seven o'clock. If you would stand with me, please, face the flag, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands unafraid, unuttered, indivisible, liberated, and innocent. Please stand where you are, bear the fear, and at a moment of silence. Do remember again that this is Veterans Day.
Commissioners, you've had time to review the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Mayor Pro Tim Widmer, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the agenda as presented signify by saying aye. Opposed? Same sign. Ayes, carry. My communication tonight is, again, that this is, is Veterans Day. There are a lot of folks that gave their lives for the freedoms of this company, and there are a lot of folks that are still living that, that participated in the armed services and just remember them, and not just this day, but every day. And celebrate with them the freedoms that we have that have been brought to us by their sacrifices. Now, Alex, would you like to cover the consent agenda and then go right into your communications?
Yes, sir. The, on the consent agenda tonight is the October fourteenth Town Council Public Forum Meeting Minutes and the October, October fourteenth Town Council Meeting Minutes. We have a public hearing scheduled tonight. Would you like me to, to go on before the public hearing or after?
I'll need to do that after, probably.
Okay. And we have the public hearing tonight on the septic and well ordinance.
Okay. Commissioners, you've had some time to read the, the ordinance and so forth. I hope the public has had a chance to. So this is a public hearing. Floor is open for anyone to discuss or make comments on the ordinance amendment on septic tanks and wells. Mary?
Mary Standard, 118 Shenandoah Terrace, and I've attended the planning and zoning meetings and have some sort of history with all of this. And so I'm really glad it's getting cleared up with the septic tanks. That's great. My question is, since this is a public hearing, and I think you can answer some of these questions. Now that those in the ETJ who have lots and so desire can go to the county, and if they meet county requirements, can apply for septic tanks. Can they not also do that for wells in addition to applying for septic tanks? Is that correct?
Scott's behind you. He can answer that whenever we go.
Okay. If you would like to come and answer that.
So Scott Adams, zoning administrator, and to your question about permitting for wells and septic, those are both under the auspices of the County Health Department.
So I think what you are saying, if I'm not overinterpreting, is that now those who own lots in the ETJ above Graybeard are fully capable of building on their lot if they, and getting a septic and a well if they meet county standards. So really, the issues of water and septic tank are issues that belong to the county, not the town. And I just was unclear on that, and so it really is an important factor as we get all these things cleared up. And I don't know all the particulars about this, but since most of these were platted back in eighteen ninety-seven with the original plats, they fall under some special statutes. And I have been told part of the issues that you can't build what you want because of the small size of some of the lots. Is that true?
So in essence, the, the term is a lot of record. So whether a lot was created in nineteen thirty-five, eighteen thirty-five, all the way up until the, you know, the previous existence of a zoning and subdivision ordinance of the town, you've got a legal lot of record. So whether it's, you know, it can be any varying size. The county, for permitting purposes, for well and septic generally has a thirty thousand square foot standard for newly created plots that's just shy of an acre. It's forty-three, five, sixty square feet an acre. So just going back to your question, so for permitting authority and spatial standards for well and septic standards, that's entirely with Bunk County Public Health and the Environmental Health Division. In terms of spatial constraints of a given lot, that's really going to be determined by an inspection from the County Health Department. So for septic, it's a soil test of the soil, you know, the soil perks for septic systems, well feasibility, and also spacing distances from other wells, water sources, and septic fields. So they, and that's all referenced to state law, which is very, very, very detailed. Read through a lot of that. So just in short, it's state law, which is delegated to the county.
So again, if I'm hearing you correctly, and I am in favor of the ordinances being passed so that people can go ahead with their plans and their dreams if the county gives them permission to do so.
I think where we're getting a little confused is we have been requested by some of the people up there to allow them to tap onto our water. So that's a whole separate question.
And I didn't want to overly confuse that, but they do have a mechanism available to them now with this new ordinance going into that. If the county approves.
Yes, ma'am.
They can certainly apply for a well and be wonderful and on their way to the place of their dreams.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary.
Hey, Scott, I have a question. Why you have Mike? For the people that have a lot that's too small to accommodate a well and a septic, is there any problem with neighbors going together and sharing a well?
Yes, at least in terms of it's got to be indexed to, you know, the number of bathrooms or bedrooms. I don't know the specifics of sharing a well or septic system between two houses or properties. Sure, that's addressed in state law and ultimately through the county, but I would think, I don't, I honestly don't know the answer to that, but I think it's going to be really up to a performance standard. So essentially, if the County Health Department is looking at that for X amount of water in, X amount of water out, or wastewater, I should say, or for a well, I think it's going to be performance-based. So it's ultimately up to the county on that.
Any other commissioners have questions? So Scott? Any, yes, Martha? Scott, if you don't mind hanging on to that, or.
Sure.
You can come get my mic, too, and here you.
That's okay. I, I have to say I just skimmed the ordinance. But I have a question. I noticed that from the ordinance was removed any prohibitions on privies in Montreat, and I didn't see where they were put back in. So do we now have an open opportunity to have privies? Just a question.
Yes, that, and, and that was a, yes, that was put back in. Yes, that was.
I'm losing control.
It's, it's a little confusing because there is a, there's obviously, there's a state standard for everything. There is a state standard that regulates the construction of privies when they are allowed, which is in a very limited condition of not being able to do septic or sewer. So that's the long and the short of that.
Thank you, Scott. Any other commissioner have questions? So Scott? Yes, Mary?
Commissioner Fouchet's question about sharing wells. And since this is kind of an open workshop, and we want to work together on these things.
It's a public.
Public workshop, whatever you want to call it. But I really am intrigued by that, and I think it's a great question. My other thought is if it turns out that you have multiple lots and they're too small to build on, can you combine those lots and make it larger? So I mean, you have to be creative when you've got problems.
And that, that's basically the, the classic concept of land assembly. So if you're trying to meet a minimum lot size, or you're trying to meet a performance standard, i.e. you need X amount of land for a septic field and/or spacing from various other considerations, that's definitely an option as well.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Public hearing would be over. And Alex, you can proceed with your town administrator's communication.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I, as you alluded to earlier, I did reach out to the town attorney asking about differential water rates, whether or not water rates in the ETJ could be different from water rates in the, in the town itself. And she did get back to me yesterday. And according to North Carolina General Statutes 160A dash three fourteen, yes, we can, we do have the authority to establish water rates, and we do have the authority to establish different water rates from, in the ETJ versus municipality. There are some caveats to that, that we have to have established classes of water, like residential, institutional, et cetera. And those classes have to be the same, the prices have to be the same within those classes. So we can establish a residential class for the ETJ, and everybody that falls into a residential class would pay that, that same price. There.
Do we currently have those classes within the jurisdiction of the town?
Yes, we have, we have residential and we have institutional. Yes. The the complicated factor is if we wanted to charge a system development fee to pay for infrastructure build-out, it's possible. It's highly regulated. The process is highly regulated. And it would be certainly a learning curve for me, and it's something that we would be, we would require engaging with the attorney to, to do. But yes, it is possible to charge something called a system development fee to actually pay for infrastructure development, not just the rate of the water itself, but the, the pipes and material going into the ground as well. So that's my report from there. I've asked Jared McIntosh to come tonight, our senior water operator, to talk about the water rates specifically. We charge, you know, like I said, a specific rate for institutional, residential, and also more broadly, look at tap fees as well. So he's, he's prepared to, to speak to that tonight as well.
Jared? How's that little girl?
So so our tap fees now are.
Would you remove your mask?
Oh, sorry. Our tap fees now are nine hundred and fifty dollars. If you have, like, if they went through and put in, exist a new water line on your street, the lot was emptied, and they went ahead and pulled a tap, we'll only charge fifty dollars to come set the meter. So the cost now, just for materials, right now with how everything has gone up, is seventeen hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents. And we're only charging nine hundred and fifty.
Seventeen hundred and ten?
Seventeen hundred and forty-two dollars and ten cents. That's making, that's absolute, I mean, that's making nothing. That is what it costs. No, not to put any labor or anything like that. That's just materials. The new meters, they've gone up, and just the meters now are three hundred dollars a piece. Tap saddles forty-nine, corpse stop seventy-three, the water line's seven dollars and seventy-four cents a foot, and the meter setter's two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And then we have gravel and the asphalt, we have to cut the road. It's a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a ton or something like that right now. It's really high. And the gravel's like twenty-two, twenty-three dollars a ton, plus equipment and manpower.
You've got equipment and manpower figured in there, into your seventeen forty?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's, and then the meter boxes, because they're plastic, they've gone up. They were like seventy-five dollars or two hundred now. The setter that your meter sits in, they were like eighty-seven dollars, like eighteen months ago. And I got some the other day that was three hundred dollars a piece. So I mean, and everything is just going through the roof. So we're, you know, we, we're going to have to up just a tap fee, you know, to that. Just, and, you know, I don't know if we want to go a little more, because if prices keep going up, then we don't have to re, come back to this again in a year from now and say, well, it's two thousand dollars now.
So we're losing over eight hundred dollars for every tank.
Black Mountain, they went up on theirs last year, and they're thirty-four hundred dollars now.
Wow, okay.
We don't have to be the highest, but you know, at least we got to at least.
Sure. Got to cover the cost. Absolutely. Jared, where's it? Finish up. I'm sorry.
And this is just as far as the water rates go. We called Black Mountain, we got their water rates. And inside the town limits is seven dollars and fifty-one cents per thousand. Outside of town limits is twelve dollars and twenty-three cents per thousand. I think we're like four ninety-five per thousand now.
Was that seventeen hundred inclusive of everything you listed after that, or is that plus all the stuff?
No, seventeen hundred includes everything to, or digging it up and burying everything back in the meter set at the house.
So it does include labor?
Yes. Yeah.
Other questions? Are you, are you going to come back to us next month with a proposal on raising the fees, I hope? I know, we don't have a lot.
We're doing that outside of the budget process, or we could explore doing that within the budget process in the coming fiscal year. My recommendation would be to do it within the budget process of the coming fiscal year. But yes, we're, we're losing money on, on water taps. As Jared's explained, and, and we need to recoup some of those costs.
Can I just ask why you would recommend waiting for eight months with the loss of revenue in that eight-month period?
Can I just ask why you would recommend waiting for eight months with the loss of revenue in that eight-month period? Instead of raising it now?
Fairness, to give people an opportunity to, to be a part of the, the public process of the budget. Also, it'll have an impact on our budget, so we'll want to adjust the budget accordingly as well. Those are the primary reasons. I think that regardless of what we do in the ETJ, we're, we're losing money in, in this area of the water department. And so, so the conversation needs to be had about increasing in those rates. The question about the ETJ needs more study. So, so what, if, if the commission were to decide to expand the water system in the ETJ, I would want to engage the Rural Water Association or, or an organization like that to actually do a rate study analysis. So we're not arbitrarily, arbitrarily deciding on a number, but we're deciding on a number that's both fair and equitable. So I'd like to, I'd like to fold that into the process of the budget and move forward that way.
We discussed doing a rate study with Keith the last time he came here, and we're going to hopefully the first year do a rate study. He's going to do a rate study for us, to see like a town our size, what we compare to. You know, we can't really compare Black Mountain because they're way bigger than we are. But other small towns like us, we're going to do a rate study and see where we're at.
Is Keith with the rural?
Yeah, we're calling it rural water, yes.
Any other questions to Jerry or Alex? And Jared, thanks. One other question. In the ETJ, when we're talking about, when folks are talking about tapping on water up there, where's the chlorinator?
Oh, which, oh, you don't mind when I hit a grape here?
Yep.
It's at the head up there past.
Right at the well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so any taps would have chlorine in them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal, okay.
And chlorine went up, we got another thing in the mail, it's went up again for the second time.
Okay.
And I noticed that on the map, there are a number of lots up on that, what would it be, northern section, near the wellheads, that couldn't have a tap, is that due to the chlorination? Is that because chlorine will not dissipate itself?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Thank you all.
As far as other communications tonight, I just wanted to make you aware that we're continuing to have conversations with FEMA. We had some folks on site this week to look at some of our projects that are yet to be completed from Tropical Storm Fred, excuse me, I almost said Alberta. And so that's moving forward as well. We're, we're very hopeful that we'll be able to get, recoup some funding from that as well. And that's it for my communications tonight.
Thank you, Alex. Folks, commissioners, you've had a chance to read the administrative report, the finance, the planning and zoning report, police, public works and water sanitation and streets. Any questions of Alex on, or any of those? Okay, public comment time. Yes, Martha?
Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland Place. I came to say thank you, and I'm glad some of our planning and zoning folks are here tonight because that committee and members of the Board of Adjustment, who are town citizens, volunteers to be on these committees have, are really working hard. And I just wanted, I encourage you to, to pass some kind of resolution or something commending the extra responsibilities. I know that Bill mentioned, you know, quarterly meetings, and now they've been meeting about twice a month or so. And members of the Board of Adjustments, who've been meeting for hours to be very, and have been trained extra times and are really working hard to represent our town and to meet the requirements of their respective boards. I was interested in a comment, maybe you made, Mayor Helms. I'm interested in the, ultimately, the cost of, for example, the Board of Adjustments, this whole process for this particular appeal, or whatever you call case. When it's finished, I think it'd be interesting for the town to know, for the citizens to know, what a process like this costs. I know there have been attorneys' fees, but you've had other expenses related to these long meetings. Also, what would be a cost if something like this went to court beyond this? So I'd be curious to know, but I especially want to commend the volunteers who are on these committees and the staff who support them.
Thank you, Martha. We did pass a resolution to thank Planning and Zoning several months ago. I don't know if you were present for that or, or missed that, but we did. And we'll probably do the same thing for Board of Adjustment.
Can I ask Alex something?
No. Yes.
I'm almost afraid to ask, but Alex, do you happen to know so far how much this hearing has cost us?
I do. So I looked at the numbers from two different angles. One, I looked at an hourly rate to, to give us an idea of what it's costing us as it's going on. And that number is approximately, and I'll explain why it's approximately in just a minute, $655 an hour. That includes the court reporter, that includes the town attorney, that includes the Board of Adjustments attorney, and that includes audiovisual as well. That does not include overtime or comp time as, as staff is. We went back, I went back through the attorneys and voices, looking over the past few months at what was actually billed for preparation for the Board of Adjustments meeting, what was billed for the training that the Board of Adjustments did, and what was billed for the meetings that we've had so far. And that total comes to $21,235.95 spent so far. I don't anticipate that to double, but that certainly is going to increase as, as time goes on. And the reason I don't anticipate it to double is because there was a lot of preparation time, a lot of negotiation that went prior to the meetings actually beginning, that won't need to be repeated. So 21,000? No.
Now, the 650, 655 an hour is not in that 21,000?
It is.
It is, and.
Yes. So, and the reason I said that was approximate, thank you for reminding me, is the court reporter doesn't charge on an hourly rate, they're charged on a per-page rate. And so we're estimating at this point.
Thank you, Kitty. Thank you, Alex.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay. All right. No other public comment, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
My name is Shirley Mitchell, I've lived here 26 years, I'm at 201 Harmony Lane. And my husband and I have been involved with the Board of Adjustment, having brought our own case and having it go to Buckland County Court, and then having the town shrink and refuse to go to Raleigh with it. I'm very concerned that all of this is talking about the cost, and so far, the Montreat stewards have not been allowed to say anything. And it scares me that the town will not want to go forward if this thing is appealed, just because of my own experience, which was a terrific travesty, and a lot of people know about it, because the town caved in. The big expense is due to the presentation by the MRA, and they're trying to just hold it. And I have written to one member up there that being present is so critical, because you can watch the audience. And at this last, I, I did Zoom for the first five hours. I've done, I've been in person the second, two times. For this last one, you couldn't see the audience. When the three attorneys were going after, trying to have somebody's evidence not be put in, if you could have seen the reaction from the MRA, I think you would have been shocked. And I was right in visual sight. So please, you need to be fair to this other side. And I would suggest that, that the commissioners actually say, if something like this happens again, each side's limited to 10 hours.
Ms. Mitchell, we can't interfere with that process at all.
Oh, I know.
We can't.
I know, but I'm bringing up the expense because you, Mayor Helms, are talking about how much it's costing.
Yes, ma'am. It's costing you and I taxpayers.
That's right. So give the other side their fair due. That's my point, because it happened.
I didn't say it was costing one side, one side is causing any, any cost. I just said that is the cost.
Yes, sir.
Period of going through the process, Ms. Mitchell.
But so far, it's been one side presenting.
True. The other side will have their opportunity, I'm sure.
Right, but I just think it needs to be.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Anybody else? Public comment? Okay. New bit, no old business, new business tonight is the second reading of the ordinance 21-10-001, and ordinance establishing ad hoc comprehensive plan update steering committee. There's a suggested motion, commissioners. Already had the first reading.
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance 21-10-001 as presented.
I have a motion to approve by commissioners who say, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second from Commissioner Alexander, is that correct? Okay. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes carry. Ordinance revision for septic tank and wells, there's a suggested motion. We've already had the hearing, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve general ordinance revisions for septic and wells as presented.
I have a motion from Commissioner Otto to approve the general ordinance revision of septic tanks and wells. Do have a second. Have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Widmer. Discussion. All those in favor, signify, sure. He didn't hear you.
Sorry about that. I just said that the record should indicate that thanks given to the P&amp;Z for the excellent job they did on the revisions of that ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion, have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, eyes carry. Budget amendment number three, Alex. That just to move money to pay for the comprehensive plan?
That is. So this is not new money. Budget amendment number three is in response to the RFP that we did, excuse me, a request for proposals that we did for a a I'm losing my train of thought, I apologize, for a consultant for the comprehensive plan update steering committee. The original budget for this was $30,000. We did an RFP, and our lowest bid came in over $44,000. So what this budget amendment asks for is for $10,000 to be moved out of the budget line item, which is salary contingency, which is in the Board of Governor, the governing body department, and moves it into the capital outlay of the planning and zoning department. So it increases the budget for the comprehensive plan update from $30,000 to $40,000. The hope is that we can then negotiate down the, the $4,000 difference from there.
Okay, I have an explanation on the motion. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve budget amendment number three in the amount of $10,000 in order to pay for the comprehensive plan update.
I have a motion from Commissioner Alexander, do I have a second? Have a second from Commissioner Lentz, discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, awarding the bid for consulting services. There's a motion to be made.
Mr. Mayor, I move to table the motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Widmer to table the motion, and would you?
Yeah.
Like to make an explanation as to why?
The, the recommendation for the firm is, is a good recommendation. They are, at, at least in my opinion, very well suited, especially given the fact that Ms. Nealon worked on the 2008 plan. That is a real benefit to us. But going through their proposal, I had a number of what I would call significant concerns. There, we just passed a motion on the comprehensive plan steering committee, but in this proposal, there is very little involvement mentioned of the steering committee. One time, the steering committee is mentioned. It appears to me that it is not a collaborative effort that they're looking toward, but that the consultant would do the work coordinating with staff and elected officials. So my question would be, how will they engage the steering committee? Because Alex's RFP specifically asked them to involve the steering committee. And I have a number of other examples of the lack of involvement. Another concern I have is how, how much is a community going to be involved? On page 18 of their proposal, 1.1.3, the community kickoff is an introduction only. No input from the community. And then the community workshop described in 2.3, it sounds like it's a, an opportunity for them to present a, a, a map, a plan map that they've developed. Item 1.2.2 does look like it could involve the community, but it looks like it's up to us and the steering committee to implement that. Third major concern is the base fee is 44,000 with a number of options added to it. And if you look at the deliverables on page 23, starting on page 23 of their proposal, many of those deliverables, in, in those three phases are options. In fact, one of them has four deliverables and two of them are options that we can buy. So there's concern about the extra cost that we, we would be incurring. In fact, one of the, the things that they're recommending is a community engagement strategy that does involve the community to some degree, but there's an, an option for them to do it. That's 1.2.3, if you're interested. And then finally, I have concern that there's no reference in their proposal to reviewing the 2008 plan. In, in any planning strategy, you always look at what, what you've been working from previously. You evaluate it, and, and then you move from that as a base point. And I did not see that in their proposal. So that's my reason for suggesting we table it. And can I just add that I'm not suggesting that we not go with them, but I'm just suggesting that we talk to them beforehand and work through some of these issues to ensure that they are the right firm for us.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this. But in your, in your motion to table it, would you and, you and, and Alex and Bill Shy, would you be available to sit down with the group? Well, if you would be willing to sit down with Alex and Tom and, and talk to the group. Alex, can you work that out? Okay. No, we have a, a motion, a second, a second of the motion from Commissioner Fuchet. Further discussion from other commissioners. All those in favor of the motion to table it? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carry.
Thanks, Tom, for investigating that. Thanks, Tom, for investigating that so thoroughly. That's why we have you on the board.
Okay, we move on to public comment again. Floor is open for any public comment. Mary?
Really planned on more comments, but I really too want to thank Commissioner Widmer for that very insightful analysis. It's become concerning that I think the report from planning and zoning, that they've been commissioned to get that back to you by June of next year, knowing how slowly government works, and it'll be another month before they're able to fully validate the members of the committee and pick a chair. I really see a time crunch that's going to be nearly impossible to meet and to certainly involve summer residents, seasonal residents, and getting community involvement. So I think y'all, and
That's why.
I really appreciate the time crunch that y'all are under and to get people involved.
That's why, Mary, if they can meet within the next week or so, then I have no problem calling a special meeting if we can iron all this out.
It would.
Bill, people can't hear you.
The original ordinance said that we would be done by June, but y'all were gracious enough to let us say we will endeavor, because I can guarantee you, we're not going to be through by June. So that's why y'all have voted and now approved, we'll endeavor to do that. Every for a while.
Are there any state statutes that mandate when that must go back to state?
Yeah.
And what is that time?
Chapter 160D.
And what is the time?
July 1.
July 1.
So you really don't have the ability to endeavor as so much as you have a state mandate to have that finished by state statute, is that correct?
Every community have a plan. We have a plan. And what we are going to do is look at that, y'all have already adopted a plan, we have a comprehensive plan. What we'll be working on revising that so we can fall fully within the statute.
So the 2008 plan is still in effect?
So that, that's part of the clarification that I wanted, that's very helpful, but the timetable is tight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else? Other public comment? Can you get that back in there, Mary?
No. There you go.
Good job.
Okay.
See, no other, nobody else stand up for public comment, we will move on. Commissioners communication? Any commissioner have a communication?
Mr. Mayor, I have comments, which I would like to read. If I may, this is, these comments are dated July 17, 2021. The Honorable Tim Helms, can you hear me? Mayor, Town of Montreat, P.O. Box 423, Montreat, North Carolina 28757. Dear Mayor Helms, what a joy and what a privilege to serve as Commissioner for the Town of Montreat for these past four years. I am grateful for the opportunity to have served, for the strengthened relationships where such relationships were already established, and for the new friendships that I have forged over this period. With this letter, I resign my position as Commissioner for the Town of Montreat, effective December 9, 2021. At that point, I will have fulfilled my four-year term. I am tremendously proud of the accomplishments that our Board of Commissioners has achieved over this period. Principal among these are the construction and opening of this town hall and the public works building, the adoption of the new zoning ordinance, and the allocation of funds in the current budget for the Texas Road Bridge project. Always, I am grateful for the positive, forward-looking, and respectful experiences with my commissioner colleagues, all of you, with you as mayor, with the loving Montreat community, and with Alex Carmichael, town administrator, and the full town staff. Surely, I celebrate the time that we have served so successfully together. I now look forward to focusing on my family and on other endeavors that I had willingly set aside to devote energies to our Town of Montreat over these four years. With the best wishes, Alice Boggs Lentz.
Alice, I was hoping you'd change your mind before. You know, I keep praying about it and hoping that you would change your mind, but, and I understand, I really do, and we'll accept that with, with many regrets, okay? And that means you'll finish up September the 9th, I mean, December the 9th, okay? 2022? 21, okay. Other commissioners' comments? Kitty?
Alice, we just all thank you. You've done a great job, you've been so thorough, and, you know, we just really appreciate your talent in your service. And I'm glad I talked you into it.
I am too.
Anyone else?
Yes, I just have a couple of things in there. Obviously, you're going to climax to Alice. I just want to encourage the community to, and I have to say this quietly, to get your thank you notes in to the staff. And you can see the Montreat Minute for details on that. And secondly, I'd like to thank the PHC, the Presbyterian Heritage Center, for collaborating with the town on a new little column that is in the Montreat Minute every two weeks on a Did You Know Fact? The PHC is deeply steeped in the history of Montreat, and thanks to the PHC, and specifically Nancy Midget, we'll be getting little-known facts. I saw some today that she's something, and it's fascinating. And I thank the PHC and particularly Nancy for that effort.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, we've got some meetings to remember. Board of Adjustments to be determined, that's the 17th, I believe, December?
December 17.
November.
November 17. Thank you very much. 10:00 a.m. here in Town Hall.
Right.
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m. Montreat Town Board, November the 23rd, 2021, 9:30 in the morning, by Zoom software and in-person at Town Hall. Town Services Building will be closed on the 25th through the 26th, 2021, for Thanksgiving. That's what, Thursday, Friday, and? Is that the 26th? Well, let's hope it doesn't snow. Montreat Land Care Committee, December the 1st, 2021, 9 o'clock in the morning, in the Allen Building. Planning and zoning commission meeting on the 9th of December 2021, 10:30 a.m. by software and in-person in Montreat Town Hall. Our town council meeting will be December the 9th, 7 o'clock here, and by Zoom software and in-person, and the public forum beginning at 6:30. Commissioners, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
You would, Alice. I have a motion from Commissioner Lentz to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Widmer. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion stands with adjourn.